I can't read that far away. So, first of all, I'd like to remind everyone this is a public meeting and that if you wish to speak on anything that is not on the agenda today, please come to the podium during public comments and state your name and address. Also, this meeting is being held virtually and we will monitor for anyone that wants to join the meeting on the screen. So with that said, awards, recognitions, and correspondence.
Go ahead.
First of all, Captain Primmer is here and I really appreciate that. And she has several commendations that I would like to read for Cindy Lemon, Lynn Ashby, Deanna Josh Hoseway, and Carrie Roberts. For those, I'm going to read the one letter that exemplifies what went on. So at this time, you, Deanna, you want to stand at the podium as I read them?
Oh.
If you answer them, no, you don't have a choice.
Alex, go.
Welcome. So on 7/7/23 at about 12:29 PM, telecommunicator Deanna Hoseway, how do you say that exactly? Hoseway?
Hoseway, yeah.
I have it mailed, I just kind of like give them directions. Hoseway received a 9/11 call, a female stating that her husband was not responsive and possibly wasn't breathing. Telecommunicator Hoseway quickly triaged the situation and determined that the male was not breathing. She immediately began giving EMD instructions for CPR to the wife. The wife indicated that she hadn't done CPR for a while, but telecommunicator Hoseway told the wife she would refresh the female to help the male. Telecommunicator Lemon was focused on the situation and gave clear and concise instructions to the wife. She continued to give the wife positive reinforcement.
That's a typo, I'll fix it.
To continue to do CPR. The situation was complicated by poor phone quality. Telecommunicator Hoseway did continue to aid the wife in a positive, calming voice and with empathy. Furthermore, she remained conscious of the wife's well-being during this time as CPR can be extremely demanding. Telecommunicator Hoseway remained on the phone with the wife until medical arrived, obtaining the name and history for medical. Her quick summary of the situation, calming demeanor, and repetitive assurance allowed the wife to continue with active CPR until medical arrived to relieve her. The husband was transported to the hospital. Throughout the contact with the wife, telecommunicator Hoseway remained focused on the task, was patient with the reporter, and utilized her knowledge and skills. She was extremely professional and there was another layer to the situation that wasn't known at the time. The patient was Umatilla Tribal Police Chief Adelman. The fire, police fire, the Pendleton Fire Department reached out to Sergeant Russell with a patient update at about 5:40 PM. The fire department wanted to acknowledge the good job done by dispatch, especially related to obtaining the correct location. Chief Adelman was still alive and lifelighted out to a higher level of care hospital. Telecommunicator Hoseway did everything she could to ensure that the patient had the best chance and resulted in a positive turn of events for the patient and his family. I think you make Dispatch, the whole Sheriff's Office, and all of its commissioners very proud. Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we had the opportunity to connect.
Thank you.
Nice job. Telecommunicator Hoseway.
Thank you.
And I have additional commendations for Cindy Lemon, Lynn Ashby, and Carrie Roberts with the very same situations. These will be distributed. And thank you, Captain Primmer, for bringing those. Here's one that really kind of touched me as I read it because it was, the service was amazing. The last call really was one of the, I've heard a lot of last calls in my life and in this position, but this one was done at a different level. It was amazing, actually. On 6/9/23, Umatilla County Sheriff's Office received sad news that one of our own Deputy Jan Good had passed away. I reached out to telecommunicator Carrie Roberts to see if she would be willing to provide the last call for Deputy Jan Good. Over the radio for the service for the, over the radio for the service forthcoming, I asked telecommunicator Roberts specifically due to her previous experience in doing other last calls. Telecommunicator Roberts agreed to do the last call for the agency. She wrote up the script for the last call. Additionally, due to the location of the service, it was determined that the recording at the location would need to be recorded. And then telecommunicator Roberts would do the live version on the radio at about the same time. On the day of the service, it was discovered that there was an error on the dates of service, which meant that the recording needed to be redone. I left messages for telecommunicator Roberts and she made the extra step of coming to the location pre-recording the last call on the recorder. Made that change on the paper she was going to read and do so with very little sleep due to a short turnaround. The last call was successful. It was amazingly successful. Telecommunicator Roberts did a clear and concise version that was heartfelt, moving to all in attendance and on the live version on the radios. I appreciate your undertaking this important responsibility. I don't know how people could do those, but that, it was amazing. So hats off and congratulations to her from the Commissioner's.
I'll let her know when she comes back from Jamaica.
Thank you.
Send that note so worried about her short turnaround time.
I also want to reach out to the Sheriff's Department as a whole and Dispatch, jail, everyone. These commendations are important for us to read. When we receive them, it's amazing that we go through them individually and have a chance to actually take some time with them before we bring them to the Board of Commissioners meeting. So I appreciate it. I appreciate that you, all of you guys, bring these forward. I think it's important for the whole county to understand what you guys deal with and let us relay it. We're not, we're not in the ballgame. We're a little different, so.
Oh, we really appreciate it and I'm very proud of my team.
Thank you, guys. Any other awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I want to mention correspondence. We received a stack, a stack of thank you notes and they were handwritten from four Hers from Milton Prewater Junior Show. They were wonderful to read and I think all three of us really enjoyed just sitting down and reading these handwritten thank you notes, thanking Umatilla County for their, for the support. And to me, it was heartwarming. It was just a wonderful thing, so I just wanted to mention that.
I agree. But one thing I couldn't get over is how many of those kids have better handwriting than I do, so.
No comment.
I can give you that number.
Ball. There was one that was looking a lot like mine, actually.
And mine's worse than yours, so. Thank you, guys. I think that's, thank you, Commissioner Kimbrough, that was well worth bringing up. I would entertain a motion for the approval of minutes of the previous meeting due 30th, 2023.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any additions to the agenda? First item on the agenda is the medical provider contract.
Did you want to do public comment at all?
Yes, I did, as soon as you reminded me. At this time, any public comment that is not on the agenda, this, now is the time to come forward. Saying done, we'll carry on. Medical provider contract.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you guys are probably aware of, on June 1st, 2023, we received a notice from Well Path, who's been our medical provider for as long as I've worked there, that they're pulling out from our agency. Seems to be a trend they're doing throughout the state of Oregon. They said that...
Real quick, don't interrupt you, but we all know who you are, but could you state who you are?
I'm Captain Frank from Umatilla County Sheriff's Office, I'm a jail commander. So they're, they're pulling out from a lot of their sites in the state of Oregon. So that left us with the task of trying to find another provider. We went through the process, actually spent quite a bit of time on the phone and Zoom meetings with Deschutes County because they decided to do their own. And the amount of work they put in, it took them probably about two years to get that planned and figured out and they had to hire a bunch of professionals to come in and help them. During this time, we were reached out by two, by two different companies. One was Nap Care and they said they wouldn't even look at any, any agency period in Oregon for under $3 million, which is quite a bit more than our current contract. I think we were at like 1.5. So then we heard from Med Trust and Med Trust actually came out, did a tour of the facility, and then they talked back and forth with the sheriff. He would have been here today, but he's not in the conference. They gave us a quote for 1.982344 for a contract and that includes 24/7 coverage. I also, when we talked about doing our own medical, I reached out to our insurance company to find out if that would change because like any litigation that comes in through medical with Well Path was dealt with Well Path attorneys and not with us. We just basically sent them the information, they took care of it. And I talked to Sheila Lawrence, who's our representative, and she said, yes, if we don't have a third-party provider, there's a 35% increase. We basically get a 35% discount for having a third-party provider come in and take care of medical. So we're hoping that we get approved to move forward with Med Trust. With the approval, we would get an actual formal contract at that time and that would come down to you to still look at.
Thanks. I think there's probably going to be several comments, but I think it's important to point out, make sure that the public understands. When somebody comes to the jail, whether they have social security, private insurance, VA, it does not matter. Once they cross that and become incarcerated, they are no longer covered by, by any insurance other than, and their medical care is 100% on us.
Correct.
And I, I don't think most people understand that.
And another thing that, that kind of helps clarify what our medical department does, it's just not a nurse, one nurse there. So they're there 24 hours, so their responsibility is if I have somebody that comes in like in a car wreck or something, they do an assessment on them to see if we can actually house them to make sure there's nothing dangerous by putting them in a cell overnight and they don't have internal bleeding like that. And then they'll recommend us taking them to the hospital or something like that if needed. They also run clinics once a week where inmates can put in kites and come down basically like going to the doctor's office to deal with any problems. There's an NP involved who provides medication. There's a mental health NP who provides mental health medication to keep people on their medications, mental health medications is why they're there. So it's a big process. It's not just the nurses there. Even with Well Path, they had the nurses that worked in our facility, plus we had like a Teladoc who they'd reach out to and they had other NPs and other supervisors that they could call on the phones at a moment's notice to help with any kind of emergencies. So it takes abouts. I want to say we had like six nurses and two NPs running the jail at one time, so.
Because, because what I said when we had that conversation, that, I mean, and you went over the top of it really fast, but one of the major things to me is pharmaceutical control. And how, I mean, you guys aren't even authorized to give aspirin. So I mean, any kind of pharmaceutical would have to be a jail trip basically each time.
Correct.
Anytime doses were given, that, that's just my modeling to me.
And so with the, with, with the medical provider, we actually have a pharmacy room there and they, they hold a license for that, so they can store, they can actually stock meds there.
And they're responsible for it too in libraries.
Correct. So they have an inspection on it once a year, which is always given to me after it's done to show that they've passed their inspection and stuff. So they take care of ordering the meds and tracking all that and counting in narcotics and stuff.
Additional questions and comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Do you have 24/7 care now?
No, but it was approved by you guys, I don't remember how long ago, to go with Well Path for 24. That's why we were kind of shocked when they came to us and said they were going to cancel.
Right.
So as of this next fiscal year, we would have moved to 24/7 coverage.
What do you have right now?
We have, they're there from about 6:00 in the morning till about 7:00 at night, depending on if anything's going on.
So the hope is if you have 24/7 care, you're going to have less trips to the hospital.
Yes. So anybody come in after the nurse is gone, that's like if the resting officer tells me he's been in a rollover accident, my deputies can't assess that. So it's like, hey, we've got to take him to the hospital. Hey, we've got to take him to the hospital. So anybody in the back. One of the things with, with Well Path is we had a non-call person, but it was on the phone. So they're relying on my officers to take vitals, tell them to the nurse on the phone, and then they make a recommendation, which was almost always take them to the hospital. We feel with 24/7, we'll have somebody there to come and assess them and actually be with them and monitor them to see if their condition gets worse. Or I think before, we always err on the side of caution because nobody was there to actually monitor them that actually was a professional on medical, knew what they were looking for, so.
Other comments, Commissioner? Mr. Sheriff?
No, it's, of course, stuck in a rock and a hard place and I appreciate you guys the effort. I know how much I could put into finding some care, so I appreciate that. It's an easy task.
Thank you. What's the wishes?
Can I make one more comment? Can we maybe in six months, see how this is, if your transport to the hospital, if those numbers are going down, can we see some?
We, yeah, we track that.
Okay.
So we track all of our, any transports going out, we have a list of how many people and where they go. And I, I believe their contract is a year, that their last month's sign is just a year contract.
Okay.
And then there was a, I'm trying to think. I think it was 90 days that the sheriff asked them if anybody either side wanted to cancel the contract, they gave a 90 days notice. So with Well Path, with us, we got lucky, we got 60 days, I believe. Some other agencies they left were 30 days. So they actually scrambled how to sign an extension with Well Path and from what the jail manager told me, those are about twice the cost of what Well Path was charging them for one truck. So some of them have extended until they can get signed up. There's two other agencies in Oregon that I know of for sure that are going to go with Med Trust and it's Yamhill County and Coos County right now.
And even, even at a year? I mean, I'd just like to see those numbers, to see if it's working.
Absolutely, yeah.
When, when is their last day?
The end of August, last day of August.
And when would this take, click, take effect?
This contract?
Yeah.
So talking to them, they would like to get in there maybe early, like, because when I was talking to Ken, he's one of the heads from Med Trust, he says it's not an easy thing to go on and set up an agency. It takes quite a while to get everything in place, policy procedures, things like that. Thing that was scaring me was they were getting ready to start up the other two about the same time that we're looking, you know, towards the end of August, September in there. And I was like, hell, so we'd be put off. But Yamhill extended their contract with Well Path, so they're looking more like October, December before they switch. So we might be able to get in there before them and get our stuff and run it, so. But Well Path is still contracted through the end of August. Right now, they're covering us with a lot of agencies, I've seen, and there are a lot of agency nurses coming in. Our NP just retired, so they're still looking for an NP.
Other questions?
Mr. Sheriff, I make a motion that we move forward with an agreement with Med Trust to provide 24/7 medical coverage at a cost of 1.9 million, 1,982,44 dollars.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is trailer RFP. Under Sheriff Littlefield.
Good morning, Commissioners. I mean, good afternoon, Commissioners. Jim Littlefield, Under Sheriff, Yount Tilla County. What we have before us is a request to go out for bids for a new ATV snow side-by-side trailer. We're seeking one that'll do all those things. Currently, we have a couple of older trailers, I think they're from the 90s, that our staff uses. And they take them into some pretty treacherous areas and some pretty bad conditions and we've had some systemic failures of axles and things. On one of them, had it repaired. And now currently, the hinges on one of the other trailer doors is going to need replaced or repaired, so we'd like to get into a better, newer platform. We think it's going to be safer for our staff and for the equipment that we are charged with. So we just want to go out for a bid and see what the bids come back as and then we will determine what level of funding that we can provide to, toward the purchase.
Sounds good. I've already had a discussion with these guys, so I don't have a whole lot to ask. Sheriff Under, Under Sheriff Littlefield, questions or comments?
No, I'm still having a little sticker shock from the last item, so.
That's a big plan agreement, so it looked a little different.
Yeah.
Wishes of the Commissioner?
I move to authorize issuance of request for proposals for purchase of a snowmobile OH, O-H-E, remember?
Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Insurance agent RFP.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Lani, Director Administrative Services. I was about ready to say good morning too, you know. Creatures of habit, I mean. It's been a little while since we did our last RFP for our insurance record, agent of record. And so we're just going to go out again and take a look at that. Before you, it was 2021, the last time we did that, so.
It was when?
2021. What did I say? I don't know, we must be in a time warp or something, I think, so.
Was it 21 or 12?
21, actually.
Okay, that's when it was 12, okay.
No, it was 21. Ferranti, Dick Ferranti used to be our agent of record with Ferranti Graybill and just recently, he's passed away, so he was a very good agent to work with, an amazing fellow and he's dearly missed, so.
Questions or comments? Wishes of the Commissioner?
I move to authorize issuance of request for proposals for insurance agent of record for property liability and workers' compensation insurance.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda is facility control RFP.
Morning Commissioners. Mark Tanner, facilities manager.
What time you got, Mark?
Umatilla County.
What time you got?
Uh, 4:25.
Good afternoon.
Form bar.
Oh, yeah. It's usually be in the morning.
Please don't make me sit through this.
What I have is, at our juvenile facility, I have an older HVAC software that runs off Java, which IT has to constantly go back and download older versions to make the software IT recently tried to update the computer over there and had a ton of issues getting the software to work. They finally did get it to work, but it's created sort of a weak link in the system there. So this is to go out for RFP to update that software to a Windows version versus a Java version and eliminate the security risk through that computer and all the issues we have with Java.
I don't know if this question's for you or for Dean, but what kind of price are we looking at? I mean, ballpark?
I'm going to guess probably 35, 40,000. It should be less than Stafford Hansel was, Stafford was 100.
So is this? I'm sorry.
Dog, good.
Couple things. One is, I was glad to hear when we reviewed this, that it's in your budget.
Yeah. That is capital improvement budget, yeah.
Is this, we put new, we put a new HVAC system in, right?
At Juve?
Yeah.
No, we did a, we had to replace a coil on one of the units.
When the heating problem came?
Yeah.
Okay. How far behind this request will a new HVAC system come? Is this something we should be looking at altogether or no?
I don't...
In 2011.
Yeah, that one was 2011. I've inquired to several different companies about what options we would have to upgrade that building. They all basically came back with, you know, that's probably the best type of system for, for that facility. As far as needing to upgrade it, I, I don't think so. I mean, we've got the new, we've got the new coil in the one. Potentially, we need to do another coil in one of the other units because there's, there's three outdoor units. There's two big ones and one small one. And we did a repair on the one coil on the second unit, which is still holding, so I'm, I'm okay with that, but...
So will we be able to match up the latest software with an older unit like that? Or is that going to be an issue?
Yeah, the software itself will, is, if, if we end up having to get a new system, we can reuse the existing software.
Okay.
Because this software will be tied into the same software we have here at the courthouse and what we're adding at Stafford, so everything talks.
Okay.
So.
I'm good.
Mr. Sheriff, I'd move to reauthorize issuance for request for proposal for purchase of new controls.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you, Mark. Oh, maintenance payable for the Hermison Community Corrections.
Yeah, so this is a double S electric for 55, 39, 55. Probably have another couple of thousand for them, just for some button-up items, but this is one of the last invoices for them, for double S electric. And this is reimbursed by Community Corrections.
Mr. Sheriff, approval?
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm not going to do the Wolf Depredation.
I don't know anything about it, but I'll give it a shot.
We're good. Next is the payable for the Wolf Depredation calculations from the Wolf Depredation Council. Let me do that, I'm on it. So what, what we're approving is actually the second part of the payable. This one is for the two producers. Actually, should have been three, but the third producer actually moved his share over to one of the smaller producers and kind of shows you how these guys work together. It's pretty impressive to, to say the least. But I, unless there's, I, I will make a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thanks, guys.
It's one of those no-brainer ones.
Needs more money. UEC agreement, this is the loan that we've talked about several times on the Mackhope Bridge. And it's for the authorization for a loan, it's called a Red Lake Loan, even though we've already got the bridge paid for. Repayment of this, for this loan will go into a funded UEC to be, gives them the ability to keep that money local in Umatilla County and can be used for other projects, community projects. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to make a motion on that one too. It's been a while. I'd like to approve the $300,000 Rural Economic Development Loan from Umatilla Electric and the USDA.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you, guys. That's long, but still. Additional comments? I have a couple, just more to, to kind of get off my chest than anything. My first one is, I'd like to thank all the Commissioners, Doug, and staff that was at the upset hearing today. I thought it was... I thought it was frustrating, um, but it, it's also how the state of Oregon works. And that's, that's a challenging part of the whole thing, is that, um, I think we all know that, um, some of the fixes to a lot of things in the state are needed to be done legislatively. And I, I think that we've created some great groundwork for that, but, um, it's, it's going to be a challenge, uh, even legislatively. We, we made a lot of headway this year on thirty-one seventy-nine, uh, House Bill thirty-one seventy-nine, but it's going to be a challenge, especially in the short session. But I, I think we need to make sure that we're participating at every level, uh, because the voices are, are what's going to make that happen. If we don't, I think, um, with John's position, or Mr. Schaefer's position at AOC, thinking what, what the backbone of today's discussions and findings were, um, I think it's going to be a case that all of AOC should pay attention to, uh, when you lose, when you lose, or when there's no clarity in, in local land use decisions, so. That's one, one of the items, and then the other is, uh, I really do appreciate everything that the Sheriff's Office does bring to us, and, so, it's never easy. And then the last one I have today is, I, I don't know when it's here, but, um, our finance department has gone through a monumental, um, process of changing something that, uh, is, is more than monumental, it's historic actually for Umatilla County, and the way that our finance department has moved and has the other technicals and everything from HR, uh, to, um, some of the GIS and everything that else that's going to get tied in together. It's been kind of exciting to see Umatilla County move forward, uh, kind of, I'm not going to say we're on the cutting edge by any means, but we've come a long ways, we have come a long ways. So those are my comments today. Any other comments?
No, I think, uh, I agree with you, it's frustrating this morning, uh, frustrating but not unexpected.
Right, so.
I learned a lot. I, um, stayed all day yesterday through the, um, Boardman to Hemingway, and, um, they actually had public comments, and we had a late come out waiting for vapor, and very, very interesting how the whole process worked. I enjoyed visiting with the members of FSAC, that, you know, during the break times, um, I felt that, it was interesting how some of them had connections to Umatilla County. I thought that was interesting. And, um, just how the whole process worked.
Yeah. With that said, um, I adjourned this afternoon morning slash afternoon meeting. Must be the, that, this could be the longest meeting ever. It's at eight hours.